Okay, awesome, great. Sarah, welcome. You have a package, I think, right here. You don't have a package to share?
I can't even, I can't even mine.
You can have it as well.
Okay.
I don't.
Alright.
I'm on my end of the computer.
So Peter, before we begin, there's a kind of last minute changes. Mr. Myers withdrew his application. He didn't want to pay the DEP for the paperwork, I guess. And Nick hasn't gotten them the minutes yet, so he'll be working on that this week. We do have, still have Adam's application up. And of course, he has solar.
Okay, great. Alright, so really, the first order of business is to go, we had talked about this before, was to go through the language that we had for the solar. Does everybody have that in front of them? And after our discussion last week, it was only last week, we came away with George Winkie volunteered to formulate this language and put it together, so thank you for doing that, and it's in front of us. So, want to go through it right now, and then if you want to lead us through what you had, George, that would be great.
Yeah, sure. So hopefully everybody got a chance to look at it. Put it in the packet. All I did was offer up two options. Were, by the way, on page 10 of the disposed ordinance, the clean copy, under minimal setbacks, just a refresher. This is the setback from public to private rights away for solar modules. And the issue that Jack Sutton brought to our attention, which is one we've encountered before, is that a lot of camp roads and some other private roads that aren't subdivision roads, those kinds of things, they've been registered in registry of deeds, they don't really know where their right of way is, they know they have one, but they don't know where it is on the face of the earth. May have never even been surveyed. The, so how do we have a setback from that situation? And so, I won't read this, but, so option one is how we dealt with it in the shoreline zoning ordinance when dealing with the setback between the road and buildings, which is based on the edges of the road, the physical edge of the road, which, you know, can be better from. The second option is, I tried to capture what we talked about at the, at the last meeting, relying on the center line of the existing road. And the way I did offer, did that was rather than say, we were talking about 10 or 15 feet from the center line, and then measuring from there, I just, I just increased it to 260 feet from the center line, so that, assuming that the route travel ways 20 feet wide. So those are two options. The, I think either could work. The one thing I realized in the course of doing this is that we don't, in this ordinance, we don't have some of the definitions that would be needed wherever, and particularly this provision. We don't have definitions for road, we don't have definitions for private roads, we don't have definitions for public roads. And all I did was take the definitions from shoreline zoning and the minimum lot size ordinance, which are essentially the same. There's some minor individual word differences, but for, that's what the definitions are at the bottom and onto the second page, and that's where those came from.
Those are incorporated in the, the orders that you have before you on pages. I think.
Thank you, thanks.
Well, I like that, it was both said 250, and I think it may also 250 as well, but either way, I like option one, and then additional definitions. That way we're just keeping it clean, and not going for 250 or 260.
Doesn't cloud the issue, it's just a number, and we go from the edge. Gotcha. You do, okay. I really like, I really like the idea of consistency for definitions too, so between ordinances, keeping them the same. So you borrowing language we already have is wise, so.
So there is, there is another mention of a private road right of way on page 11. Small from page 6. We may need to apply the same, whatever you guys decide to apply the same options.
Yeah. You handle whichever option, so I don't option one, just modify the language in the same manner. Yeah, I actually prefer option one of those two as well. I think it's nice and clean.
The two.
Drawing up another number like 260.
Yeah, right, no, that just has a little bit of confusion.
Right.
Where'd that come from?
I was actually gonna ask, not being at the last meeting, because that was a typo.
But as you can tell, it was intended to be that number, to account for that variation, certainly. From the edge. Sarah, do you have any preference?
I'm going.
You like, you like number one? Pete?
I like 270. I find you guys are like.
There's one in every crowd, Pete. It's, thank you.
Yeah, number one.
You like one? And then are we all in agreement then that to include the definitions as presented on this? We just borrowed from those and we include also in this one, knowing that there would be some consequence, like Anthony mentioned. Are we good with that? Alright, so let's do that. Anthony, are you able to do that for us? Thank you. Alright, is there anything else we need to do on this? I mean, if you, if the board feels necessary, we could take a have a motion on this and have it recognized that way. I think we have general agreement, but I want to make sure we're good. So if the board feels that entertain a motion on this for, for official recognition.
Yeah, we should have a motion. Yeah, do it. Oh. We, I make a motion, we got any options to address solar facility setback from private roads that we draw on with option one? How the shoreline gets around the same problem, a solar, even, I can even just read it.
Yep. Yep, and then the definitions?
Yeah. Oh, solar modules may not be located within this in public and private rights of way. Or in the case of a private road, where the location right of way has not, has not been surveyed and sort of been a kind of this subdivision plan, pilot plot plan, or other similar levels of thought, and so a module may not be located within the area of the current to this location on the private road.
I was just gonna say, like, do you want to, in your motion, do you want to include that you'd like to have these definitions that George presented as part of your motion too?
Oh, no, I didn't, I wasn't, I'm keeping brief, so.
Okay. Okay.
With the additional definitions. What did this on definition?
Okay, alright, so we have a motion, and seconded, and seconded. Any more discussion? No? Thank you very much for helping put this together and putting pen to paper, as it were, and putting it down. Appreciate that. So, all those in favor? So, we'll call vote. So Craig, Pete? Yes, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich? Oh, sorry. Understood. And I am five in favor, none opposed. Thank you, Rich, appreciate it. Right, so that's here.
So, as I mentioned a little earlier, I'm just, I'll send you guys and ladies, all a final copy of this. All the language that's been struck from the existing ordinance is struck for all the additional language that's underlying, like it would be for the voters. If you see any mistakes, I can all send this out this weekend, if not sooner, and please let me know, because next week, I'll send a clean copy to Mary to include in this for their next meeting.
Okay.
For their consideration. Just as a reminder, the process will be that, assuming that the select board approves this, I don't know why they wouldn't, because they've been kept in a loop the entire time, everything that you've received that I've sent, they've received as well. Then it goes to the, to the town attorney for this.
So, Tom, thank you very much, Anthony. Is the next select board meeting on the 14th or something?
Let's see, they had one on the fifth.
Okay.
Thank you. So, that also should indicate that we should have a high level sort of recap kind of memo prepared for the 19th, correct? So in advance, I'll do that, I'll come up with something that has some high level bullet points that's digestible, and.
And you can just send that directly to.
I shall. Alright, thank you, everybody. I think, I think we're good. And Anthony, have a great night.
This has been my favorite meeting of the week.
Fantastic. Well, we appreciate what you do for us.
Good luck there.
Yeah.
Okay. So moving on to new business, Richard, you want to lead us through this application?
Sure, so I'm gonna simply remove the debt and replace it in the same exact debt, but in much better shape. Attached to his application is DEP permed by rule, because the debt looks to be like, probably part or half that anyone goes to be in the water, that's like that. Yes, roughly at least half, yeah. And so, I think that base is covered, and essentially that really is. Thank you. It's our, it's our, it's all the issue. Yeah.
They did, yes.
Excellent. Um. So before the meeting gets started, I know I was wondering, was there much, was there a need for you to come before us? I said it, I wasn't really sure, when I was looking at it. I may want to depend upon others who are more experts in specific definitions and where it's applicable.
It's really basically, because Richard and I had the same conversation, I helped it wrong, I didn't prepare, it's all over the water, it's probably 90% over the water. It's offshore a little bit, but what they just made is do is just get a permit by rule, that's why I'm talking about the sizes and everything, and they just I don't know, every town's different, and I don't want, hey, it's breaking down, yeah, it's identical size and everything, so that'd be kind of in your wheelhouse of
Right.
how you want us to look at it.
And I appreciate you taking the time and going through the application. I only mentioned the question that I had in mind, it wasn't really for you, it was just like, huh, I wonder if we could do this without having to do this.
I didn't know.
As long as it's on the shore or somewhere.
And we have to probably, right, because it's a structure on the shore.
I agree, that close to the shore, whereas it's not fully in the shore, you just might, lady, you want to take a look.
That, that was the only thing I could think of about it, I mean, because it seemed like it's, nothing else is changing, it is a aged structure that needs, is in need of replacement, right? The dimensions are the same, it's not leaning any, any direction.
Same location, we're prepared. That's, it'll be here, but that's what we're, can't do here.
Yep. Okay.
Take real strict. It's a guy. You turn it down, you have to move back to bridge, but I don't think we want to go there.
Right, right. Because we faced things like this before. You know.
Yeah, not, not too many people would take that first.
So, Peter?
Yes.
Your, your thinking is this comes before us rather than Richard, because it's somewhere in the limited, limited residential zone? And because it's an accessory structure on a non-conforming lot?
That, that last part that was where I was thinking, if I'm thinking correctly.
It's not all on the water, part of it is on the land, you know, and that's the reason I thought, I, myself, I think it's an accessory structure. And some of it's on lands. Probably that's the reason, folks, even though we did have this, this term by rule. I think it's been formed a lot, so, it's like, yeah, I think this plenty of land, that's a table to our permission. You should say on that.
Yeah, you got 250, you know, you're so bad.
Yeah, that's the back.
Oh, that's the back.
Should be a dimension across the stuff, I think it's over.
It's probably one, just, just look at this, because that's that angle.
So.
There's very much view of water.
Conforming lot, and then non-conforming structure? Is that what we call it? Non-conforming structure?
Forming touch of the shore.
Yes.
I just want to start from the right foot. George, do you look at the tables?
Yeah, I was. That was, my question was more for my own education than anything else. So, a question for you, Rich. Again, this is, I apologize, I'm taking your time there, you're figuring out what the ordinance says, but the I'm on page 67, where you have the different special exceptions, and one is for water-dependent structures. This isn't a water-dependent structure, I don't know what is. But the ordinance doesn't define it. But I'm not quite sure I understand what that says. It seems to say that a water-dependent structure doesn't need to be moved back to the greatest practical extent.
The whether the
It's why.
The greatest practical extent would be, did you say it on 67?
67, number five, I follow.
Yes. Okay, that whole section has to be allowing a structure and resource protection district. If there's no other place on property, put the structure.
Oh, that whole exception?
Yeah.
One, and everything that's included under it?
Yeah.
So that's not relevant here?
Not real, no.
Okay.
It's, it's, we wanted to make sure that we weren't town wasn't subject to takings, claims, or whatever, if the person had owned and a resource protection district, so that was the special exception for that.
Okay, because I vaguely recall that there was something in the ordinance about water-dependent structures, and that was the only thing I could find.
Yeah, there, there, there is something also in the ordinance, and it it says a boathouse is not a water-dependent structure.
Right.
Which some people where'd that come from? But we were seeing people converting boathouses, get a permit for reconstruction of the boathouse, and it doesn't turn out to be a boathouse at all, it's well, gang.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, so in this case, let me, if you don't mind me asking, so the, this is on Davenport Road, on Great Pond, right? And is that land kind of flat? I mean, no, but it's not steep or anything, right? Okay, and so, what, so just starting at the right place, we have kind of regular kind of lot that is conforming. It's a non-conforming structure, or it's not resource protection, so where does this at, where does where in the shoreline zoning ordinance are we to make sure that we're landing on the right thing? Because, because it's just strictly a little, little non-conforming accessory structure, I just want to make sure we're on the right, right wing.
Yeah, that, that, I guess, was sort of the nub of my questions, because I couldn't figure it out, unless, unless it's that you know, that because it is a water-dependent structure, the answer to, can it be moved to any practical extent? The answer is no.
Yeah, I considered it a non-conforming accessory structure, so all, just like decks, that's a lot of that, they're conforming, but they're still accessory structures, this is just happens to be half water. You know, that's the way I look at it.
I mean, you may recall, we had one on Long Pond that also needed to be reconstructed, and that was, but it wasn't part of a dock system or anything like that. And that didn't get moved back a few feet, couldn't be moved much, but it was, that was a true deck, not a deck dock.
Yeah, so the, I think that's the one dock fingers pumped to it.
What's that?
The two dock fingers pumped to this, was like two fingers around for the dock, they pumped to this, it's kind of part of that, it's stayed in forever.
Right.
And you're referencing the one where that you're representing the owner of the code office, we can take that as, because we may have more facts.
Oh, yeah, from Woolwich.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he was living.
And then what, we couldn't move it back too much further because trees or rocks or something?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Ampli isn't too far from the water itself, it's just a very little.
It was an after the fact application. Issue.
Yeah, I do remember that now. So, for this particular thing, are we kind of early on in the in the ordinance, basically around page like 13, 14? As we get into noise performing structures, this is not stairs or ramps, it's not some relocation. Talking about basically replacement of a structure that's non-conforming.
And then, so you consider that, yeah, one of the dock system, being water dependent. It's not a non-conforming structure. Question then becomes in my mind whether Richard can issue the permit, because it's a conforming structure on a conforming lot.
Did we determine whether it was water-dependent? I thought.
Well, it's not water-dependent, but it's not a, it's a non-conforming structure. If it's a non-conforming structure, we have to look at moving it back to the greatest practical extent. So either, in my mind, it either got, can look at it as a conforming structure, because it's a part of the dock system, or it's a non-conforming structure, because it's a deck with docking.
So I've been saying that it's a, a dock, because 99.9% of it's beyond the normal high water line? In my mind, that's a dock.
I think it's a dock as well, I mean, it's hardly touching the shore, like it connects to the shore, go onto it, like their other house that goes right to the water, has a walkway that has what I consider a deck, because it is 100%, if not 90% onshore. Then the dock goes to it, this one's actually out over the water.
Right.
So like, with the DEP, I talked to them, and it's a, consider, you know, we're replacing a permanent dock, it's really what we're doing. You know, because the other two docks come out, but it's the size of a deck, so that's kind of the way I put that, I know, if Roman done one, if I'm a carer, that's the way, but that, he said, you know, take it, redo it, it's a considerably grandfathered for a dock that's there in the water.
On page four two, we're referring to this. Remove damage, we're destroying, we're gathering the cause by more than 50%. Going intact and making maintenance. So the problem with the other one, Long Pond, is they tore the power to rebuild it, and fall apart before they tore it apart.
Yeah, I think.
So they would just replace it, so I'm gonna follow the power. Was, so.
Well, it sure seems like it's a water-dependent thing, the, you know, based on the pictures that we're seeing of how it's used, it sure seems like a dock to me. Um. That, that was a good indication for me that.
Whoa.
So, um, and it sounds like, like Adam has presented this DEP, and the vernacular they've used in the application process is also referencing a dock. Um, so it would be, so in other words, it would be kind of weird for us to interpret it one way, and then DEP a different way, but the same thing. I'm just tossing it out there. I, I'll show my hand, I'm in favor right now of thinking of this as a water-dependent structure that is a dock. So, Rich, I have a question for you, if, if we, as a board, think of this as a water-dependent structure that is a dock, um, would we then turn, then it would be a conforming structure?
There would be.
That on a conforming lot, which then, I think, goes to the CEO, is that correct?
That would be my thinking, like, this is an accessory structure. And it talks about accessory structures on conforming lots versus non. Performing on accessory structure, consider it to be water-dependent, that there's no setback requirement that you need to look at moving it back to the greatest practical extent.
Okay.
Do you need to vote?
We will.
I didn't, I didn't know.
Yeah.
You feeling a little, the ice a little thin over there?
Oh, no, but I was, this, I had never encountered this particular type of application, and so I presented it to you guys, but I really didn't know it. Between the DEP and myself, we could take care of it.
Yep.
It's worth it, just for the discussion.
Yeah, well, as you can tell.
It was, it was to me.
Yeah. You know, I've seen, was on the board since 2015, this is the first time.
Same, it's very worthy. The other part, I would want to remind anybody who's listening, and you, is that the first nail that happens, the first sound of hammers on the water, the town's gonna get calls. What's Gardner doing down there, right? And so let's, this is why we air it out and do it in front of everybody, right? It's not just like an arbitrary thing, we're trying to go through this thoughtfully, you know, and look at what applies, and.
And I liked the way you did it, because I learned quite a bit just in the last 10 minutes.
Yep, fantastic.
I did too.
I think we all did.
Yeah, it's a very good process to go through, and I don't want to extend a lot of Adam's time, he's been very patient with us, so thank you very much, appreciate it. Yes, Craig?
I'm in motion.
Yes, please.
I'm in motion, we refer this permit to the CEO, due to the fact that it's water-dependent, and the permit by rule labels it as a permanent dock. On a conforming, it's on a conforming law.
We hit key words, thank you. So we have a We hit the key words, thank you, so we have a motion on the floor to refer to the CEO.
A second.
And second it, any more discussion on this? Thank you very much. So roll call votes, so all in favor, so Craig.
Yes.
Pete.
Yeah.
Sarah.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
I to him in favor, Rich, thanks for your consultation, appreciate that, so. You'd be able to deal directly with the CEO on this, okay? So really, a nu- number of things, first, I have to fill out the application. I noticed there was a, there was a, a DEP certified contractor number, is that yours?
Yes.
I figured probably as much, so thank you for filling that out and you can deal with Richard, we should be all squared away and good to go, I suspect, so.
So, I don't think we're gonna be here too much longer tonight, if you don't wait tonight, you cough and then you're golden ticket. Or you wanna do it, uh, two days, come pick it up.
Thanks, Adam, really appreciate your time. Okay, alright, that's that, um. Let us go on to CEO update. Do you have permit updates for us?
Yeah, so, right now I have six applications. One, I believe we intentionally stall, that would be our one forty two, would be Camp Road headache. Keep sending me bits and pieces of the application, so she's the one that put the steps in the water, she has. After all the knock due, she has a few flagstones all over her, so. So. It's keeping on it, so what I, my intention for next week is to go to her house and I wanna get a good measurement from the water to the. The house, I guess, or, that's a good question for you guys. So the closest part of. Her structure would be the stairs coming off, right? That would be measured to, correct?
Cause they're, they're new, is that correct?
Yeah, that's my question, do I measure to the foundation or to the, generally speaking, I've been measuring to the foundation. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
So what's the, what's the alternative of the foundation?
The stairs.
Oh.
The stairs are closer to the wall.
Yeah, it's just a set of stairs.
Yeah, the stairs.
I thought maybe an issue was, you measure to the foundation or to the edge of roof.
No, no, no.
In that case, it'd be the edge of roof.
Right, whichever's closer, um, no, it's a deck and stairs. Uh, so I'm gonna go up there and get an accurate measurement and then I need to look at, she's just got. She's got like an outbuilding, she's got a big garage, I think that's passed on the foot mark. But I need to get calculations as to her perfect surface. And I need to measure her flagstones and stuff like that, so I think she's intentionally stalling, it's like the email and her call. She just sent me a little bit of here, and I'm like, my last one, I said, I need four pictures of your house, all sides of the house, and I was two days, I bet not. Um, so other than that, um, one of the applicants is starting in September, one in the fall. Uh, and two of them are commercials for B Hudson, and I think I'd like to put that one on next, next board. And from any paper and ink sample. Even if I double side this particular application, it's ninety eight pages, I think. So I didn't know how, how we felt about that, and the other one's like a hundred and six.
What's that for?
Uh, the Watkins family farm, turning that into a three apartment unit. And then the other one is for a diamond, so you can't hold it. But as you probably know better than I do, B Hudson always has a lot of paper. Other stuff, so I, I'll look through and see if there's anything I can take out, but there are some pages I can take out such as headers. This is this section, maybe that, but still, it's ninety six pages long.
Rich, have they submitted, you know, the ordinance required a copies?
Eight copies?
Yeah.
No.
They give me one.
One copy, ninety six pages.
Cause the alternative is to have them do all the photocopying. As, as the ordinance requires.
I think that's the reason.
And us come to the town office, pick those up.
Okay, great, I like that. Save me time, save the town money. I'm all about.
Yep.
So essentially, that's it, right now. Lot of second going in for some reason.
So if you could just let us know when you have those.
Yeah, I do, I'll get right on the team, I'll email Jeff.
Cause in the past, they've actually been quite good about having.
I'm sure you'll applaud, I'm sure, I'm sure you'll, I mean.
Well, they've kind of undergone a change in ownership too, so.
Who?
Business to one of his employees. Can't remember his last name, his first name's there.
He's been here before.
He's a small stature.
Who's that?
The owner, prior on.
Al, no. He's a size guy.
Yep.
I remember the name, but I can't picture, anyway, okay.
Used to live in water, go move Belgrade.
So in the essence of time or lack thereof, I did throw on another application for this, for tonight's agenda. A, I didn't have time today, and B, I thought it would be kind of late to notify everybody in the. That's about it, business as usual, very busy.
Have you had many people coming in to ask you questions about this or that?
Oh yeah, every day, building questions, say congratulations. I had to tell someone probably the other day, they can't do anything, cause they're so close to the water and their house is huge.
Yes.
It's just not nice to do.
Yeah.
You know, it's like twenty five foot house, it was twenty six feet from the water. It was huge.
Yeah.
That was unfortunate, but.
Yeah.
But they haven't neighborly disputed, they're so happy, we don't have a fence or anything.
Yeah.
That made their day.
Thank goodness.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of people are coming in, like your niece was in, right, recently, eight. There are quite a few, uh, non-shore in permanent cell, we're up to. His just made sixty nine for the year, depending you, you vote and, and I. That's building. Forty eight, um.
Really?
So the town is busy.
I guess that's good, right? So I have a question for you, um, so it's not so much about permits per se, but just sort of thinking back in time. Previously for Board Secretary, we had Sheila, right? Then we had Alex for like a minute, right, or something, wasn't Alex around for a bit? Julie, after Julie, didn't we have Alex?
Yeah, I think she did one set of minutes.
Right, and then, then we haven't had anybody filling that role, right?
Yeah, and so Danny. Required the help of Nick. Last weekend, the dad went hospital, he backed in hospital again, so I understood why didn't get around for the last.
Yeah.
This weekend, he's supposed to get around, at least getting us some.
Yeah.
Um, but we, we really do need a permit, uh, I'm gonna talk to Benny about that, we need somebody to permit.
Is, is Danny in tomorrow?
No, he's a two day guy, we.
I just don't know which two days.
Yeah, so when, so when there's a select board meeting, he works Tuesday, Wednesday, and when there's not, he works Wednesday, Thursday.
So, so how do I reach him?
I can get you his phone.
I used to have his cellphone, but if I were to email.
I think it's town manager.
Okay, I will do so, okay. Basically, you know, show my hand, I think it's really important that we. Put it out in the ether, that we need to fill that position. I don't expect Danny can solve it in the short period that he'd be around, but I want. This, I want it to happen.
Yeah.
We need it to happen, um, it's unfair to have it keep falling to you to pick up things, it's unfair for Nick to try to pick it up. It's, it's, we need to make it happen.
Well, maybe come from you, Peter.
He'll ignore it even more. So, but I just wanna put the plug in for it, that's all, I, we, we, we as a board need it, the town needs it, and I think it'll help. Both you and Nick not to have another hat to wear, you know, right, these things, so.
And one other thing off subject, I guess, is I had a leaks committee meeting yesterday, they're the ones that are buying me more hours. And so I think they're gonna present something for the select board in August. Requesting that I get eight hours on Friday. Ricky Dameron is on, on board for sure. I don't know the rest of the select board, and if you haven't heard, the select board did narrow down the two candidates for town manager, nobody heard that. They both were me.
I heard second rounds of interview were happening next week.
So, need a facility.
Uh, for, up here for maintenance, I have no idea, I know that they're doing interviews in here tonight for, I think it's just for the transportation. Uh, Scott Dameron is filling in right now for maintenance up there.
Right.
On his days off. Yeah, but I don't believe they filled that position, and a gentleman named Mike, he was. You maybe know him, I don't know his last name, he's a former state trooper, he's doing sets and jobs, kind of take care of some.
You know, like, you know.
It could be. But he's doing the summative stuff right now. Allegedly Chris buried somebody in the wrong spot.
Is Mike going through?
Probably was. So that's as much of a job.
Okay. Alright, great, anything else?
No, sir.
Anybody else?
I got a question.
Yep.
I must have been out in left field and not paying attention. But why are we not dealing with the Myers one, cause it's still incomplete?
No.
Withrew it.
He withdrew it today, he didn't want, A, he didn't want his DEPP, and B, he did not want it in the Russell paperwork. He said he's gonna plant some shrubs there and he's gonna find an alternate route down to the lake as that one's dangerous. It's too bad, if I really wanted, you know, see the, the ruined area taken care of. His choice. Well, he'd already paid a seventy five dollar check that I was holding, so I asked him, want, want me to deal with it? He said, well, you did a lot of good work, why don't you keep, I can't keep it. Besides, he's a rep, he's a very, he, and he's a pastor, so besides that, it's made up to the town of Belgrade. And down in the bottom left, it says for a set of stairs at six Paul Acres Lane or whatever. So I just read it for him, I thought that was nice, he said, I appreciate all your hard work. Once in a while, I get a thank you, so it's kind of nice.
Cherish them when you get them.
Yeah, exactly.
Now, do you have a tip jar on your desk?
Yeah, it's still empty, it's been this in January.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. If nothing else, I think we should adjourn, so I annotated a motion to adjourn, anybody?
Please a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Any more discussion, all those in favor, Craig? Pete? Sarah?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we need to, five in favor and none opposed, we're done. Okay, alright. I think I can go.